Ladies and gentlemen, if I could have your attention, we'll go ahead and begin. I'd like to welcome you all to our special meeting for January, January 13th, 2011. If we could have the roll call, please.
Commissioners Bennett?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Rott Fogel is absent. Sharkey?
Here.
President Khan?
Here.
The agenda for the January 13th, 2011 meeting was posted on the bulletin board outside City Hall on Thursday, January 6th, 2011. Introductions and presentations, presentation by social service agencies.
And who is our first social service agency?
I believe it's Glendale Association for the Retarded, GAR.
Thank you very much for having us here. We are so continually delighted for the support of the community and ongoing support by your commission. I feel it a privilege to be the Foundation Director at GAR Services. I have one of those jobs that every day is a good day. It's like Disneyland. Every day is full of smiles and love and happiness and there's never been a bad day at work except to find a parking spot. So that's a pretty good thing.
Can I interrupt you for one second? What's your name?
My name is Sharon Roth.
Thank you, Sharon.
You're welcome. Imagine your first day of your child's first day in school. I remember taking my daughter, when she was five, to her first day of kindergarten, holding on tight to her hand, not wanting to let her go into the classroom, and of course, not letting her, not wanting to let her see me cry all the way back to the car and all the way back home. Imagine having that same feeling and taking your daughter to school in 1954, and the school telling you that your child could not be part of school because they had Down Syndrome and they did not fit in. Those were the days that there was not special education and inclusion in school. Our fandores, Jerry and Phyllis Campbell, had those same feelings as parents that we did, and they went home angry and hurt, but wondering there must have been more people in the city like them that had children that could not participate in everyday education that we take for granted. So Phyllis, being way ahead of her times in those days, put an ad in the Glendale news press asking for parents of other children with disabilities, and she had 17 families within a week contacting her. And from that, the Glendale Association for Retarded Children was started as a school and an educational program that was held at North United Methodist Church, which is now part of Holy Family on Brandon Central. The children grew up. Eventually, kids were allowed to be in programs in school included in and special education started, but these children grew up, became 18, and Phyllis soon got the idea, what do we do now? These people want to work like you and me. They want to earn a dollar. They want to go to work. They want to earn their pay. They have every feeling that you and I do. They don't know anything different. So the workshop became a self-aid workshop, which was a work inclusion program. They recycled newspapers. They went up into the community. They did various jobs such as mailings, first-class mailings, putting labels on envelopes. And to this day, we have done the same. In 1985, we opened our first group home. In 1991, the second group home. And in 1999, our third group home. We now service almost 80 adults with developmental disabilities, which are related to mental retardation, Down Syndrome, autism, cerebral palsy, and brain damage. And they work in the workshop, doing various jobs such as mailings, newspaper recycling. They go out into the community. You can see them at the YMCA three times a week, out doing landscaping and cleaning up the yards, emptying news bins. They also go to John Wells Golf Course, all those golf balls that various golfers hit into the places other than the little hole, collect those balls, and they go even to my house and pull weeds. And at this age in my life, it's a back-saving adventure, so I'm grateful for that. What I have done right now is brought one of our clients, because I think things are much more meaningful when you can talk one-on-one with her. Trinity? This is Trinity Clark, and she is one of our clients. She's been at GAR for eight years. Want to say hello?
Hello.
Hello.
Trinity also lives in one of our group homes, and she works at the workshop. What do you do at the workshop, Trinity?
I, I, I do newspapers.
What does that mean, doing newspapers?
That means that we do checking.
Do checking? And what do you do with those papers? They just sit there?
No.
What happens to them once you do them?
They, they roll them.
And then from those, these newspapers are sold to companies such as lighting manufacturers, some horse stables, some pet shops. And many members in the community have, which look like our city trash bins at their homes where these newspapers are collected, and they love doing this. I think there's a day of the week that's your favorite day at work. Which day is that?
Going out to lunch.
Which day? She's just like you and me. What day do you go to lunch?
On Thursday.
Oh, okay. And she also lives in one of our group homes. Why do you like that home? What's so much fun about that?
Because I have friends there that support me.
What are the names of your friends?
Ronnie, John, Helen, Caroline, and, and Eddie.
And Eddie. Something just happened last week at that home. I think you have a new, new pet in that home?
We have a new pet.
What is it, a dog or a cat?
It's a dog.
What's his name?
His name is Buster.
They're very excited. One group home has a pet cat, and one of them has two parakeets, and now they have a dog. So that's great news, and they get to help in walking the dog. Something that our clients do in conjunction with you is you attend Club Maple, don't you? What is Club Maple?
Club, Club Maple is, is like an afternoon program where, where we, where we do different activities, like, like going on field trips, like the Wax Museum, and sometimes arts and crafts, and sometimes we go out to the Americana and walk around.
What did you do on New Year's?
We, we danced the night away.
I wish I could go to Club Maple. Now Trinity has shared something with me, and she said I could share it with you. She loves going to Medieval Times. So Trinity, why do you like Medieval Times?
Because, because the, the surroundings, the, the lighting, the sound effects, the horses that, that they bring in.
There's, I think there's someone special there, too. Who's that?
His name is Jay.
And is he one of the knight in shining armors?
He's one of the knight in shining armors that I like.
Very good. I think I'm going to go to Medieval Times. Trinity told me a little bit about her parents. Where do your parents live, Trinity?
In Colorado Springs.
And how long ago has it been since you've seen them?
I, I haven't seen them in a, in a long time.
Do you miss them?
I miss them.
Yeah, I would miss them, too. One other thing about Trinity you might not know, she goes to college. Where do you go to college?
I go to GCC.
And who's your teacher?
Stella.
What do you do there? What do you learn about?
We, we learn about current events.
And I think you had to do some reports, too, and print them out, didn't you?
Yeah, we had to do some reports, too.
And this young lady here loves to dance. Can you tell me why you like to dance so much?
Because, because I like the different people, the different volunteers dancing, dancing with me.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Trinity. I'm so glad you came with me today. As you can see, every moment is special, and everything that you do as, as a community and individuals touches their lives. I know it does mine, and I couldn't think of working anywhere else. We have a program at GAR called Sponsor a Client, which we can hold all year. It's held at Derby Day, our annual fundraiser, in May. But many of the clients' dental programs are not covered, so a lot of community members donate $100, and that helps go into a fund which helps pay for dental. We had one client who had two teeth missing for many, many years, and last year she was able to get new teeth, and she just smiled all the way and has continued to smile. You can reach us at 818-242-2434, or go onto our website, which is www.garservices.org. And again, thank you for your support. It's a privilege to be here.
I just want to thank Trinity and Sharon for being here today. I had the privilege of being on the GAR Board for eight years, and it's an absolutely wonderful organization. I've seen Trinity dance. She does like to dance, and she's very, very good. So it's a lot of fun. And I just want to reiterate that Derby Day this year, it's the 20th anniversary of Derby Day. It's the main fundraiser at the Glendale Association for the Retarded. It's on May 7th, and I'm sure there'll be lots of information in the news press about it. And if anyone out there is interested in learning more, you can call that phone number that Sharon gave you, and she'll give you all the information. It's, it's a really fun, fun day, and lots of exciting things going on.
Please.
And Trinity, I've been to the dances, too, and I like when the clients dance with me.
Trinity, we have a little bit in common in that I love to go to lunch also. And I wish that I would have been able to dance all night on New Year's Eve. My wife also probably would have wished, but I, this year I just wasn't able to.
Thank you again for coming. Thanks. What's next?
Item 2B, recognition of Patrick Liddell.
I think Commissioner Sharkey has that honor.
I do. It is an honor, and for many reasons. Let me just read the plaque. It says, "Community Services Department presented to Pat A. Liddell in recognition of," I should put my glasses on, "in recognition of his outstanding service to nonprofit organizations in the city of Glendale." And I have to tell you that we started the Glendale Parks in open space about a year and a half ago, and I don't know how we would have done it without you. You were supportive. You guided us. I had to sign things. I knew if you read it, I was okay to sign. And so I just wanted to thank you personally for believing in the little foundation that could, and we did. So let me present this to you.
I just assumed that Mrs. Patrick had volunteered me for this task, because she knows that I don't have enough to do in our mutual efforts on behalf of Kiwanis and some other organizations around town. Actually, it was a wonderful change of pace, because sometimes you get pigeonholed into certain areas, and I have to tell you that I like hiking in the open space, but I haven't had much to do with open space in a very long time. My spaces are all closed in within an office and sitting in front of a computer. So it's, it's a pleasant task to be involved in setting up a whole new venture like the Foundation, particularly since it's supporting the open space in our area here. And I do appreciate your, your good thoughts and the recognition here today. And now I have to figure out what to volunteer Mrs. Patrick for. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Great. Sure.
I, too, want to add my congratulations to Mr. Liddell for all that he does, not just for, for Parks and the Parks Foundation, but for all of Glendale. But I do want him to know that I will be letting the Kiwanis president know about this, so you better bring money for a fine on Friday.
I was certain of that.
Okay, good.
Great. Thank you again. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Item 3, Commission staff comments.
Do you guys have any comments?
Just to give you guys an update, we, I volunteered for the Arts Advisory Committee for the artwork at Maple Park, and we've had a couple of meetings. We're sort of through the first phase. My sense is, and I was really surprised, at the level of art, artists that have applied, we have, I'm not sure world-class, but certainly people with national reputations that had just wonderful art, at least at the first level. So I think what, however it works out, Maple Park is going to have some gorgeous artwork.
Any comments? I do have a couple of comments. First of all, I'd like to welcome our acting director, who is Jess Duran. And he is taking publicly, privately, I guess I should say, last week, our director, George Chapchan, left us. And George, as many of you know, was an outstanding director here for many, many years, and we will miss him. And he went to the city of Long Beach. But now we have, and stepping in is Jess Duran as our acting director. We also have our crack staff, Dave Ahern, Gary, I'm, I'm going to kind of stretch it a little bit, but Gary as well. I'm just kidding. You're very welcome.
He's a little crack.
Exactly. But anyway, I just want to acknowledge Jess, and also to have said some kind words about George as well, because I thought he did an outstanding job. Anyway, that was the only thing I wanted to add. I don't know if staff has any comments at all.
President Khan, the only thing I, I can say or do is expand on, on your comments. Mr. Chapchan was here for seven years, had some very major accomplishments. A lot of the development projects that we've been to, the groundbreakings to, or grand openings to lately are as a result of Mr. Chapchan and, of course, working in tandem with Mr. Ahern. He was a very beloved leader. We will miss him dearly. He clearly made a mark on this community. It gives me, it is my honor, and I appreciate, appreciate the opportunity to do what I can to provide some semblance of leadership to the men and women of the Parks Department. Mr. Chapchan and his staff have set a high bar, and, and hopefully we can continue those, those high standards and provide the quality of service to our residents that they've come to expect.
Great. Thank you very much. What's next?
Item 4, Oral Communications. Discussion is limited to items not a part of this agenda.
Okay, I have one card. It's Carolyn Young.
Hello, and welcome, Mr. Duran. I am, my name is Carolyn Young, and I'm with the Greater Glendale Council on Aging. And I was just kind of reminiscing, the last time I was here was a few years ago. When I appeared before the commission, I think there were some city council members here, too, and I begged them to, to approve the money for their, for the greater, for the ARC, the Adult Recreation Center, the Glendale Senior Center. And I said, please, I have been advocating for that center for many years, and I told them that I was a young woman when I started advocating, and now I am a senior myself. And I can say that it has finally come to fruition, and we have a beautiful center now, and I'm so proud to have been a part of that, advocating for all those years. And it came before I have a chance to use the center, too, so that's nice. It's a beautiful center, and I said at that time, too, it was, it was sad for me as one who's been, I'm a geriatric social worker, being in the field for so many years, that Burbank and Pasadena had better centers. Well, I can say today that finally Glendale does have a more beautiful and better center than the other cities that surround us. So that was very nice. It's, every time I'm there, it's a hub for seniors. I, in the old center, there was a few seniors maybe hanging around, and now it's just, there's not a, a room or a chair that is not filled with somebody doing something. And because of that, we have more, more activities going. There's a state-of-the-art gym where there's never a, a machine that's empty. In fact, we have to have ladies-only hours so that the women can have a chance. And thank you for having the women have a chance to use the machines, too. So anyway, I'm very proud to be here today, also representing the Greater Glendale Council on Aging, which has been around since the 70s. I haven't been with it that long, but, but quite a number of years. And we are, we are a group of volunteers who are with agencies that are dealing with, with seniors. My agency, I work for Providence Health and Services with the Senior Outreach Program. And we are here to advocate for seniors, and we're also here, we have done fundraising. And I, I had wanted to thank George Chapchan for his help, and, but I can thank him, even though he's not here. He helped us, the first year we had a major fundraising, he allowed us to use the Civic, the Glendale Civic Center as our room to hold a beautiful evening in Tuscany where we raised $10,000. And we've had a few other fundraisers, and what we do with that money is, in fact, since we're all volunteers, every dime goes back to the seniors. And we give out grants of $250 for seniors who are very needy and in dire situations. And the, the case managers at the Senior Center identify the people, and then they fill out an application, and then we write the checks. We've written the check for many different things, but lately, most of the checks that we write back are for the Glendale Water and Power. Our seniors, because of the, the cost in medications and medical care and the cost of rising rents, they often, you know, have a month or two where they just can't pay their water and power. So we have been coming in to keep the water and power on, and you can imagine how important that is, especially this last December. Right now, it's heating up, but we've had just tremendously cold weather. So we have heated the houses of numerous seniors in this past month. But I want to say, unfortunately, our funds are dwindling, and I will be, in fact, Maggie and I will be in the back of the room to collect checks that you might want to write for us. You can make it out to the Greater Glendale Council for Aging, and we'll accept anything. So we'll be back in the back of the room waiting for that. Thank you. We also, we had, we had this past year in, at Thanksgiving, we, along with the, with the personnel of the city of Glendale, we, we had a fund drive, a food drive, where we collected food for the homebound seniors. And one morning, we gathered at the Senior Center, at the Adult Recreation Center, and we filled bags with food, and each homebound senior was able to get two bags of food for, for the Thanksgiving season. I also wanted to thank Mr. Liddell, who just left, but he was, we were having a little problem with our nonprofit status, and he was able to help us with that, too. So we're very grateful for that. But I'm, you know, very proud to be here today to say that we finally got the senior center that our seniors deserve. So thank you.
Thank you.
Item 5A, Consent Items. Approval of the minutes of the Commission regular meeting held on November 15, 2010.
I'll move the derection.
Second. Commissioners Bennett?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Rott Fogel is absent. Sharkey?
Yes.
President Khan?
Yes.
Business Agenda 6A, Reports for Information Only. 6A, One Annual Report of Therapeutic Recreation.
I would like to introduce Walter Alvarez, who is the Community Service Supervisor in charge of the Youth and Family Section.
Thank you. Good afternoon, President Khan, members of the Commission, department staff. My name is Walter Alvarez, and I'm the Community Services, Community Services Coordinator, I mean Supervisor, wow, for the Therapeutic Recreation Program as well as the Youth and Family Services Program. But I'm here to present on the Therapeutic Recreation Program, just to give a yearly update regarding this program, and we'll be covering a period between November 2009 through November 2010. The Therapeutic Recreation Program, I'd like to start off, first of all, to say thanks to Sharon and Trinity for being here today and really kind of showcasing the Club Maple from the beginning. So it's great that they were here. The Adult Therapeutic Recreation Program is, is a program that provides recreation, socialization, and educational opportunities to adults with disabilities. The program's comprised of three components. One is the Club Maple Program. It's been in existence for 21 years already. We celebrated our 21st anniversary this past April. The other component is the Get Fit Program. Get Fit is a nutrition and fitness component, just to encourage the participants to get out there and live a healthier lifestyle. And the third component is in collaboration with GAR, which is Past Times, and this is to give the senior population the opportunity to go out there and utilize our resources through our department, whether at the ARC, making use of the long, lifelong learning programs that our, our department provides. So again, it's something, just kind of making the resources available to, to GAR and the senior population who, you know, they go on beyond employment and what next, so we make those resources available to them through that partnership. Club Maple, the Club Maple Program currently has a participation of about 28 participants. Our capacity is 37, so we are there. Last year, we had 31. We've seen a decline from last year. And that's just due because some of the participants move out the area or because of group homes, they're kind of placed outside the area, so transportation becomes an issue for, for some of them. But we, we are holding strong with the current staff we have, and we, the staff we have is very compassionate, they're very understanding of this population, so I'd like to give them kudos foremost. The frontline staff has a great understanding of this population, so when they do programming activities, they keep their abilities in mind, so they, they benefit from the services. This year, Club Maple, the other component is that they go on excursions, like Trinity said. Some of the excursions include, like she said, Medieval Times. We did Pirates Dinner and Dance. We did the LA Zoo this year. One of the latest ones, we partnered with Pasadena Abilities First Program, and we were able to take them to Almanza Court, and they had their Thanksgiving celebration this year, which was just a huge gala. The participants, we got them their corsages, we got them their boutonnieres. And so they just, we added that special touch, and then they really enjoyed it. We had about 22 participants who attended that event, so it was great to, for them to be part of that event. And again, our average in the excursions is about 22 for the larger excursions, 15 for the smaller, community-based excursions, such as bowling at our local bowling alley. So again, it's just a rewarding component of our program, the Club Maple Program. The other Get Fit component, again, we've, we adopted that about five years ago, and this is with Lanham and Regional Center, and, and we took it on, and it's, it's stable. We get about eight participants, and again, it's within the ratio of our staffing, so it's great to see that. And what we did this year for the Get Fit Program, they participated in Logan's Run, which is a, a walk-run for autism awareness. So one of our participants placed second in that event, so it was great to see that. And they did do the training, the conditioning necessary for them to participate. So this is a, kind of a six-month training course that they went through with our staff, proper conditioning, stretching, nutrition. And again, it's a success for them to get out there and just, you know, have a healthy lifestyle, be included in everything, like Sharon said, you know, them being included, feeling normal, part of society is, is very important for us, and our staff definitely does, makes those efforts. Past Times, again, that's something that, you know, they, with GAR, they bring out the participants, that participation averages about four to five participants weekly. They use Spar Heights Center, or now I see they're using more ARC, obviously, we could see why. Anniversary celebration was at the Civic Auditorium. This year, we had a hold-down theme, so it was great. We had a, I forget the, the band is American Wranglers, so I was kind of, just kind of, you know, introducing them to Western lifestyle, barbecue, corn on the cob kind of meal served for them. We also host a yearly fundraising event. This year, we raised $5,500 towards this program. Our goal is 6,000, so we were short $500, but that's because two teams dropped out. Our fundraising event is a softball tournament. A lot of the players come. We've, we've held this tournament for 11 years, and they're mostly returning players, and they understand the cause and the efforts. And we also partner with a lot of the co-sponsors in the community, and that's Lexus of Glendale, IHOP, Damons. They provide gift cards, they provide in-kind goods, and again, this is raffled off just to raise additional funding. And those funds are used for the excursions, to pay the admission fees for these field trips, because they're not covered. And it's just the purpose of enhancing the quality of the programs and the services we provide to the clients. And that is pretty much it. I think I covered most of it for today. If there's any questions?
I did have a question. In your report, it gave a recommendation.
Sure.
And it talked about, it says, "Explore alternative transportation resources for program participants whose lack of attention..." program participants whose lack of attendance is attributed to transportation issues."
Correct.
Talk a little bit about that. Is that you're looking for funding, you're looking for someone to donate a vehicle? What is it that you're hoping to, to get in terms of this recommendation?
A vehicle would be great, but again, we run into liabilities and transportation issues with that, so the cost is, is greater there. What I'd like to see, if possibly, we could partner with, um, Transportation Department and see if they could expand additional days, because currently, the arrangements we have with Dial Ride is that they pick up the, uh, participants on Thursday evenings, um, during the regular non-operating hours, because our Club Maple program runs between 6:00 and 8:00. But there are additional dates when we have the excursions on Saturdays that some of them, some of the group homes, because they've lost funding, they're not available to provide additional staff to provide the transportation to the meeting location. So we do drop attendance on the field trips. Some of the other outings, Get Fit, for example, is on Mondays. And that's why we see that we, we ask the group in, the Club Maple participants, how come they're not going to Get Fit on Mondays? And that is the main purpose. Most of the reason is the lack of transportation within the group homes. Sometimes they're not able to get out due to lack of staffing or, especially because they can't transport all of them. If, it's either they all go or none go sometimes, because they, some of them don't want to get in the van and go, so they have to just say, "We can't go." So we would be able to pick them up and provide that service, we'd pick them up. We try access, but sometimes access is an issue. Sometimes they don't pick them up on time, as much as we call, access and say, "Hey, you have to address this," because we're constantly advocating as well for them. And, but again, I'm looking to see if there's additional dates that we could partner with Department of Transportation to expand the Dial Ride, an additional Dial Ride date.
Is that through the City of Glendale?
Correct. Correct.
Do you still have the talent show?
Uh, the talent show? No, we didn't do the talent show this year. And again, we're just constantly trying to, you know, provide something new and it, you know what? We may have had it actually this April. Yes, we did. We did, correct. Yes, we did have it. We had it at the Spar, Spar Community Center.
Yeah.
Yes.
Good, okay. That was fun.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Walter.
Before we move on, if, if I could mention, if we could look into this, and I guess it's the City of Glendale's Transportation Section, to see if there is an opportunity to provide additional transportation for this, as was suggested, if that's something we could at least discuss.
Absolutely. President Khan, we will initiate, uh, this discussion with our Public Works Transportation Department. My other thought was possibly advertising volunteer opportunities for people that would be willing to give rides to some of the participants during the non, non-regular hours. Well, we'll explore that avenue as well.
Sure. That's a great idea. Great. Thank you very much.
Item 6A, two, Customer Service Office and Brand Studios Annual Permit Revenue Report.
And I would like to introduce Ross Ferris, who's the Community Service Manager in charge of the Civic Auditorium, Brand Studios and the Customer Service Office.
Good afternoon, President Khan, Commissioners. Ross Ferris, uh, Community Services Manager of the Community Services and Parks Department. We lease out or rent out six parks and three community services buildings. And during the course of that endeavor, we generate just short of 500 reservations a year. And the gross revenue is 165,000 for last year. We netted out 136,000 after expenses, uh, which is a 9.3% increase over the previous year. I think that's remarkable in the economy that we're, that we're in. And I think it shows the demand for our parks and community services buildings that's there. The community services buildings are, the building at Glen Oaks Park, which is known as the Joe Bridges Clubhouse, the, uh, Community Services Building at Dunsmore Park and Griffith Manor. Griffith Manor, of course, is closed right now. We didn't have any reservations last year. The park is undergoing a renovation. We advertise our facilities through the Leisure Guide and on the city's website. We also, as much as possible, promote it at our marketing booth during events. And, uh, when we have packets that go out through the Glendale School District, we include our list of facilities that are available for renting also. The revenue would have been higher if we would have been able to rent the Dunsmore Building a little more. However, that was used during the station fire by the Fire Department during the fire and after the fire, they continued to use it during the rains to monitor the mudslides and that, that type of thing. Right now, uh, the Fire Department is once again in the building, but we hope, uh, we will be able to generate, uh, more revenue, uh, after the rainy season is over. In addition, uh, the completion of Griffith Manor later this year will enable us to increase the rental revenue. At that facility, it's going to be a beautiful facility. I don't know, I think you all remember the Griffith Manor, before we closed it, it was pretty rundown. Uh, this is going to be a beautiful new facility with a beautiful new community services building. We'll have a small kitchenette. We'll be able to, uh, really promote that. The other thing that's happening, uh, is that at the Joe Bridges Clubhouse, we are either finished or close to being finished installing central air conditioning and heating over there. In the past, we had one lone space heater and the building was, was okay during the winter, but very hot during the summer. Now we have, uh, we'll have a facility that, uh, temperature-wise, will be much more conducive to rentals. The future of the rentals, uh, as I said, is bright, but when it comes to, to picnics in the parks, uh, as we add more parks, we'll be able to add more rentals. Right now, though, in the present parks, we're maxed out. Between March and September, that's our busy season, we, those facilities are rented all the time, um, with very, very few exceptions. So I think we're maximizing the resources we have and as new parks come on stream that where we have, uh, pavilions and facilities for rentals, we'll be able to take advantage of that. You have any questions?
I do. You, you mentioned about we're maxed out in terms of our capacity in that time period.
Right.
And over the last few years on the commission here, we've gone back and forth with fees and rates. In your opinion, are we at where we're supposed to be at in terms of the fees and rates?
Yes. We have, we did not do a survey last year with, uh, benchmark cities. We'll do one this year. We normally do them every other year. At this point, um, I would hesitate to raise the rates at least too much, just because of the, because of the economy. However, definitely in the future, um, I think the rates can, can be raised. I think as the economy improves, we'll be able to generate more revenue that way. And we need to take a look at our expenses. In other words, we each picnic reservation, photo shoot, they have a site host and that's staff expense. As, if, when the salaries go up, um, we're going to have to take that into account too. But I think right now, we're okay.
Great. Thank you very much.
Item 6A, three, Mobile Recreation Program Annual Report.
And I would like to introduce Norma Vias, who's the Community Service Coordinator. She's in charge of the Park and Play program. It's actually part of the Mobile Recreation Program. Recently, we came to you with a Party on the Go package and we, she recently inherited the climbing wall, which she won't report on today, but that'll be a part of the package when we report next time to you.
Good afternoon, President Khan, members of the commission and department staff. My name is Norma Vias, Community Services Coordinator at Pacific Community Center. The Mobile Recreation Park and Play program was assigned to me in October 2009. Park and Play has been in existence since 2001. It is an 18-foot U-Haul box truck that is equipped with a variety of recreation and enrichment supplies and activities. Park and Play is a free drop-in program which operates Monday through Friday from 2:45 to 4:45 PM. Two recreation leaders drive the truck to a designated site within the city to conduct a variety of fun, safe, um, and supervised recreation activities for children of all ages. Activities includes crafts, games, contests, and homework help. The program visits multiple locations weekly, focusing on sites that are in low-income areas or areas where recreation is not easily accessible, accessible, excuse me. These locations have typically been in our parks, Glendale Unified School District after school sites, and Glendale neighborhoods. Residents can also request Park and Play for their neighborhoods. Park and Play also provides youth activities at various special events throughout the year. Some of these events include Cruise Night, Halloween Hoopla, National Night Out, Glendale Healthy Kids Health Fair, cultural events, city park ground openings, and Glendale Unified School District special events. The average monthly attendance in 2010 for our park locations was 198 children. The average attendance per GUSD after-school site was approximately 80 students once per month on their visits. The average attendance per student event, for special event was 75 youth. Special events occurred approximately once every month or two. Park and Play visited 192 park sites, 19 GUSD sites, nine special event sites, and 12 private locations in 2010. The program is funded by our general fund. During the October 18th, 2010 commission, which Joanne explained, commission approved the park, the Party on the Go package. This will also assist us in marketing our Park and Play weekday program and generate revenue. Our next Park and Play special event will be on February 12th at Winter Wonderland. We hope to see you all there. Uh, thank you, and if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
But yeah, just, your, your recommendation was, your first one anyway, was to, uh, offer it for birthdays and, and business parties?
Yes.
Is that something you're going to do or you're?
Uh, we're in the process of, um, receiving requests. We have had a few requests that have, haven't panned out completely, but we have been taking phone calls regarding interest. I think the spring and summer will be our more popular time.
Right. I, I think you said you did have 12 birthday parties?
Um, private organizations, so, um...
So it sounds like you're sort of doing that now.
Um, these were during the week, so, uh, private organizations such as New Horizons' after-school program could call us and we would set it as a location for the following month to attend.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
President Khan?
Sure.
So Norma, or?
Yeah, Norma.
Yeah. Yeah. So one of the ideas would be to begin to charge for private parties on the weekends, for example?
Yes.
Okay. And generate revenue that way, as opposed to continuing to work with the nonprofit organizations during the week to use a Park and Play where we don't charge?
Right now, we, we regularly will visit the schools or the parks and we've been visiting some of them because they're, they're, they're in need of some extra activity. So we've been trying to help out and assist. Norma's been very good at contacting and staying, networking with the community organizations. Park and Play is to visit parks and, and schools normally, and then the weekend use, we would go to the special events. And so we, we want to offer Party on the Go to be a part of that package and then the community organizations could take advantage of that.
We will continue to offer the, um, activities during the week because it falls within our Monday through Friday after, after-school time. So instead of staying at a park or another neighborhood, a private nonprofit can ask for our visit.
But during, during the week, there's no charge?
There isn't a charge. It's a free program. It's drop-in.
Item 6A, four, Monthly Activity Reports at A, Park Services.
President Khan, Commissioners, uh, my name is Gary Morello for Park Services. December was a major event for rain, as you probably all know, and that's, we spent most of our time fixing leaks, cleaning gutters, cleaning drains, cleaning off roofs, trimming trees that were falling into the gutters and causing major flooding in some of the buildings. The Building Repair Department did a very good job over at Civic Auditorium, fixing three or four leaks that they, that occurred, had occurred over there. And we were able to keep the water basically out of the facility for the time being. Uh, it'll have to be repaired more fully later, but at least for the time being, the, uh, the rain event didn't hurt us too bad there. We also had a lot of film events over the last month. Commercials, major movies, small movies, uh, two-day shoots, one-day shoots, four-day shoots. It's, uh, better this time of the year than any other time for us, since we don't have to do a lot of maintenance. And they do bring in a significant amount of revenue, I think, for the city. Plus, uh, the movie company does have good food. So, uh, we usually are able to partake in that. Some of the projects that we've got going, uh, that are almost done or in, in process are the reforestation of Shoal, which got delayed because of the rain. It's too much rain, they can't get on the hillsides, can't plant trees, so we have to delay that. The crew is continually starting to irrigate the trees that are existing and we're waiting for the, uh, company to have a schedule for us for after the rain here. Ross did mention about the HVAC over at Joe Bridges. It should be completed within the next seven to 10 days. So hopefully, that'll be all done. Uh, it should increase the revenue and the marketability of the place, um, you know, greatly. It is awfully cold in the wintertime and it is awfully hot in the summertime there, so it should help, uh, help out immensely. Uh, we're doing the Verdugo Caretaker's House. We're renovating the entire house. It's a caretaker's house at Verdugo Park, if you don't know, if you not know. It's hidden, you can't see it, but, uh, we're renovating the entire, the entire house over there and hopefully have a, uh, a person in there soon to be able to take over the reservations for that area. The teahouse roof tile that we're waiting for, for the entrance for the teahouse that we're renovating, uh, finally came in from Japan last week. So as soon as we get some time, we'll be breaking loose and, uh, putting the tile on the entrance to the teahouse, now that it's finally in. And if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them, otherwise, that's my report.
I did, it's not a question about your report, Gary. I specifically brought something to discuss with you, though.
Oh. This scares me really a lot, you know?
This is, and seriously, this is from the Parks, is it Parks, the magazine that we all get?
Oh, Parks and Rec?
Parks and Rec Magazine.
Recreation, yeah.
And they had a, and I, and I tore this out for, for us to talk about, not necessarily right now, but for, for me to share with you. And it says, "The grass is not always greener. Turf versus grass study reveals advantages for turf fields." And it went and it did this whole analysis. So I was gonna, I was gonna share this with you and then if you look at it, and, and very seriously, and just share your input about this, um, one way or another, whether you think this was, because it was kind of interesting that it was in, it was in our magazine.
So it's turf versus artificial? Is that what you're saying?
It's, 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 yeah. It says, uh, I'm not gonna read the whole article, but yes, in a nutshell. So the comparisons and it talks about not just the economic advantages or the wear and tear, but it, it lists 11 different categories. And the conclusion was that, that synthetic turf alternatives, uh, could be preferential. So anyways, I'll share this with you and then be excited to hear what your feedback is.
Was that, was that the recent one that you got?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Exactly. Thank you.
Item 6A, four B, Recreation and Community Services.
Where am I? Okay, we had our activity report, which included our tree lighting ceremony, uh, and then of course, our drop-in programming. Uh, there's, this was, uh, we're kind of putting two months of work together in this, this report. Uh, I do want to bring to your attention a couple activities that are coming up. We had a very successful tree lighting, uh, in Perkins Plaza, very crowded. Santa Claus was there, everyone had a wonderful time. The drop-in programming at Maple Park, since we're down, the facility is down, we don't have an opportunity to have anything there. We tried to have some summer programming with our Parks Creating Futures program. It was really hot and it was really windy and it was very difficult to... It was really hot, and it was really windy, and it was very difficult to have a type of programming there. So we threw out a lot of balls, and the kids got to play a lot, but not really organized activity as we normally would have it. Pacific Community Center continues to be very active and busy. Between the Pacific Community Center and the Adult Recreation Center, oh my goodness, we're going all the time. Staff are extremely busy. There's a few activities that are coming up that I just want to remind everybody of. We have a full-moon hike that's coming up at Oakmont View Park, which is Tuesday, January 18th at 7:00. The full-moon hikes are very popular, so it's very exciting. Everybody likes to go out, and hopefully, we have a clear night, and we should. This week is supposed to be great weather, so that'll be exciting, and a lot of people participate in those on a regular basis. We have Parents' Night Out coming up at Spar Heights Community Center, which is Friday, January 21st. Parents have an opportunity to drop their kids off, and the kids have a great time, and the parents have a night off. So the kids are having fun. If you want any more information on that, it's 818-548-2187. And then we have Family Fun Night coming up at Pacific Community Center, which is on January 26th. This is from 5:00 to 7:00. And families can come together, and they can enjoy board games, there's games to play in the gym, all kinds of free activities. It's free, and if anyone would like information on that, it's, the phone number to call is 818-548-4098. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
6A4C, CIP Projects.
President Khan, members of the commission, the CIP group continues to work on a number of projects. Maple Park is one that's making tremendous progress. The expansion portion of that community building is framed in now, the block is set, the roofing is in, interior improvements are underway. The entire existing building gets renovated, and much of that is completed. So we're still on schedule for completion by the end of March of that facility. So it's looking remarkably well. One of the most iconic components in that building is the roof structure. It's a bell-shaped roof, and it is supported by 12 glue-lam beams. Stripped those beams down, they've been painted over through the years, brought them back to their natural wood as part of this project. It's really pretty impressive sight. It gives a lot of character. The art component that Commissioner Bennett has worked on is going to be an important part of the project, and how that gets incorporated will be exciting to see. And then we'll be looking at doing art components in several of the other new projects that we have. Last for additional participation from the commission in that area. Griffith Manor Park is moving ahead. We lost a couple of weeks in construction there with the rain. We were in the ground trying to get our foundations poured when the rain hit, so that set us back about two weeks. But we have the slab poured and the foundations poured now for the community building. The site utilities are in, the site grading's done, perimeter work is done. So that project is also moving forward at a good pace, and we anticipate being done there sometime in April of this year. Gmashin Barn Seismic retrofit is moving forward, but a few delays on that project with contractor issues. Those got resolved. Project is probably two and a half to three months behind where we thought it would be given the contractors inability to sign a contract with the subcontractors. So that will also finish at the end of March. It actually works out better for us that they'll finish later. We'll know by then if we've received the second grant for the nature center. If so, then we would be in a good position to move forward with that work with the same contractor. So that's actually quite impressive to see, the structural system for the seismic retrofit on that, about 50% complete, maybe 60% complete. The first level and second level bond beams are in. They are large, large structures, so it's a pretty impressive site. Riverwalk wants to get started, as you might imagine, it's a star-crossed project. We hope to get approval from the county on the 20th of this month, and if we get that approval, we could potentially start work the first week of February. That all depends on several of the stars aligning, so we'll keep our fingers crossed and continue. The ARC Phase 2, the park component, we're going to award that to a different contractor just based on competitive pricing. So that slows us down a bit, but it's not that big an issue because of the rainy season. Much of the work is earthwork, so we wouldn't be doing it now anyway. But we'll come back to that in a couple of months, get that awarded in the meantime. Then Maryland Avenue Park, the design on that is almost complete. We'll be ready to go to plan check in February, get out to bid probably in April, get council approval. So those are the big ones. We're getting ready to release the EIR on the Columbus Soccer Field. We have the draft EIR in-house, what we call our screen check version, where the different departments go through it and review what their comments were to ensure that they were incorporated. When that's done in another two weeks or so, we'll publish a notice of availability for the EIR. We'll bring it to the commission as well in February. We'll hold additional community meetings out at the school, and then we'll take it to council. We'll have a 30-day review period for the EIR. And then we hope to get a consultant selected to start on the EIR for Site A soccer fields at the sports complex, working with the planning department on it. Hopefully, that can get completed in the next few months, and we can get that EIR underway. There's a few other projects that we're in the pre-development stages on. It's a little early to talk about them. Those are the main things.
President Khan, commissioners. Dave, did you mention the status of Dugmejian? That we're opening it?
Oh, no, I didn't. We, as...
One of you, please.
As Mr. Duran was saying, we had closed Gmashin Park because of the rains and the winds and the county doing additional import of sediment to the placement site there. In addition, the county was doing repair work to the crib dams that go up the area of the Dunsmore Channel, and so they were bringing bulldozers and cement trucks up and down the trails, actually. So that work's now complete, and we opened the park up to the public effective today.
Yeah.
So that notice should have gone back out, gone on our email list. It'll be up on the website.
I think you emailed, I think I got an email.
We have, a lot of the trail work's been redone. Jeff and Eric Grossman have been keeping tabs on that, and we've made a lot of progress on trail work up there. Excited about the reforestation plan. This weekend, we have a third Saturday of the month is our workday up there at the Duke for the community, so we take all volunteers. We continue to work on our plans for reintroducing the Big Cone Spruce at the Duke. Interestingly, staff attended a workshop put on by the U.S. Forest Service for the Angeles Crest Forest area and other areas, and all the plans that they were talking about implementing for their recovery, one by one, are the things that we've already done. So we are right on the same page with them. Of course, we have a smaller area, so we're ahead of them, but we are right on track with what all of their experts have recommended for their, our recovery and restoration. And we'll have the restoration ecologist out there this weekend, again advising us on replanting and restoration for, that's the Duke.
You did a beautiful job on the trail going up the hill and then down into the ravine. How were the rains with that? Is it still intact? Did we...
Yeah, the trails are even...
Did a beautiful job.
It's even better now. We've done additional work up there.
Extended a little bit?
Yes, it is extended quite a bit. The county contractor working with our staff has cut that one trail along the Dunsmore Channel almost all the way to the end. So it is longer and wider than it ever was.
Oh, it's a great job.
Quite good. It was just a matter of getting it reforested.
Riverwalk, you said you're hoping to get approval by the county?
Yes.
What do you think the probability is that it's, is it high? Is it low? Is it unknown?
Well, let me go out on a limb and say that his parks will go out on. We think it's pretty high. Getting it on the schedule is being held up by some other things that the county wanted to, county staff wanted to take DreamWorks' easement approval along with the Riverwalk approval at the same time. So this all has to do with the realignment of the easements and the access points and getting new approvals from the county. So that's supposed to be on the agenda for the 20th. It was supposed to be on the agenda in November. Then we were told it was off. Now we're told that it's on for sure for the 20th of this month. We're hopeful that that is the case.
That'd be great to get that started, isn't it?
Get that done. We've got some, we've given notice to one of the adjacent property owners that has equipment and materials in the easement area, they have a horse corral and picnic tables and things. We've given them notice to remove their materials. We've been working with them through the city attorney's office. We'll be meeting with them again first part of next week, and they seem to want to cooperate, so that's a good sign. And our contractor, Northeast Trees, is trying to get their bonds in order. You might imagine bonding is a difficult process for these small nonprofits, and credit regulations tightening up becomes even more difficult for them. So we're trying to get that squared away, and then with all those stars in alignment, we should be able to get started in February.
So it's possible, then, that the county could approve it, but Northwest still have some problems?
Yeah, they could, they could get hung up with their bonds, and we're hopeful that those things will all happen concurrently, and assuming that does, then we'd get them started.
It's always exciting to have so many parks projects ongoing. Neat thing. Thank you. What's next?
6A4D, CDBG Homeless Programs.
President Khan, members of the commission, we provided you with, for your reference, a list of the funding proposals that were received for the fiscal year 11, '12 CDBG program. You may remember, we have $515,000 available for nonprofit organizations to provide social services in our community, and we received 25 proposals competing for that pot of funding. In addition to that, we included in our request for proposal $300,000 available to nonprofit organizations and city departments for any capital improvement projects. And that's in addition to 2.5 that the council set aside for the city's own priorities for capital improvement projects, including a park development project and our two Section 108 loan payments on previous projects and code enforcement. So the next step is that those proposals were received on December 21st. The next step is to, for staff to prepare a one-page staff analysis, to send those analyses to the agencies and departments, give them an opportunity to respond to any weaknesses that we may have identified or any questions we pointed out from their proposal. Then we package all funding proposals and send them to our advisory committee, and they will conduct their interviews on February 25th and, February 25th and March, March 2nd or 3rd? March 3rd? Okay, on March 3rd. And then they will develop their funding recommendations, which ultimately get submitted to the city. One of the organizations that we, that submitted a proposal and that we funded last year was GAR, and so their presentation is another example of how we're able to partner with these organizations to provide services to.
Are the interviews, is it a private interview? Or is this...
No, no. It's totally open. The interviews are conducted as part of an official advisory committee meeting. And even though they begin at 7:30 and end at 6:30 or 7:00 in the evening, it's all day of live, live programming.
Siding programming.
Sometimes, believe it or not, we will get persons to run to our meeting because they're watching on television and they have a question. So they'll drive down here, ask their question, and then drive back home. So a few people do watch it. We also have, if you have any questions on the homeless programs, we wanted to give you a very quick update on the winter shelter program. It is ongoing. It's at the Armory. Unfortunately, we do have blackout dates. We've probably had a total, maybe 10 blackout dates since we opened on December 1st. Blackout dates means that the Armory is closed for the National Guard's own training purposes, and homeless persons have to be bused from the Armory to an alternative shelter in downtown L.A. Oftentimes, people don't want to get on the bus and go down to L.A., and it has an impact on the committee, and we just do the best we can to deal with the impacts. The shelter will be open continuously until March 15th, then it's over, the season's over. We continue to work on the local model. In fact, we had a call from the, from LASSA, the regional organization that plans winter shelter programs, yesterday reaffirming their support and willingness to work with us on a small, local program, and for them to know to continue to look for an alternative site to the Glendale Armory to give us a chance to develop our small, local program. So that was good news there. They reached out to us. We've also included another reminder of the point-in-time count, and we always need volunteers to help us get out in the community and count the homeless on one night in January. The date will be January 26th. Okay. Be our official homeless count date. And that's important because this is data that we submit to HUD in order for us to receive our 2.5, 2.6 million dollars in funding every year for homeless programs and services.
When is that, Jess? Like, January 26th, from what time to what time?
If it's okay with you, Mr. President, I'll have Yvette expand on that.
Good afternoon, President Khan, members of the Parks Commission. Yvette Sombalion, the homeless count will be Wednesday, January 26th, all day. So all of our homeless service agencies, including volunteers and community members, will be conducting the count beginning probably 7:00 a.m. and going until 10:00 p.m. Volunteers are needed to support the count. We walk throughout the cities of Glendale, the streets of Glendale to conduct the survey of our homeless. And if you are interested to volunteer, please contact 818-548-3720. We will accompany path to chief outreach case managers along with our community policing officers during the evening hours, and there will be teams of two members going throughout the city to conduct the survey.
How does it work in terms of just if you were to volunteer? Are you interviewing the person, or how does it work?
Yes, there, so the volunteer training is scheduled for tomorrow at 10:00 a.m. at Perkins Community Room. If you're interested in volunteering, you can come in tomorrow or call us for the training. Each volunteer, there is a survey instrument that's developed that basically asks first initial, last initial state, if the homeless clients have been becoming homeless in Glendale or different states, and they're special needs population, whether they're veterans, domestic violence, mental health. So at the end of the day, that one day, all service providers, including everyone on the street, we unduplicate to identify how many homeless clients we have in the community. And that number is what we justify to apply for federal funds for homeless continuum of care programs. continuum of care programs.
I did have a question about the winter shelter. In the past, we've had a number of challenges and this year is, do we have less challenges operating it than we have in the past or do we have more?
President Khan, I'm going to, again, defer that to Ms. Sombalion.
The winter shelter program is a hypothermia program. So, typically, clients drop in to access services, including hot meals, case management and showers. During the day, they're connected with Path to Chief programs and case managers. We do have our challenges with the program. The biggest gap is connecting our clients to permanent housing. Because this is a three-month program, we're unable to connect all of our clients, the 150 clients, to permanent housing. So, working with our local winter shelter program, a small-scale program, will be able to meet some of the challenges we are having with the bigger-scale program.
Yes. President Khan, Yvette, the numbers are higher this year than they were last year, so that in and of itself would present more challenges.
We're actually serving about 190 clients at the winter shelter program, which is higher than our average from last year. We're serving less families this year from previous years. We've currently served 14 families, rather 27 families last year. So, we're still serving a lot of unaccompanied chronic homeless individuals.
Do you remember what you said? It's different or greater from last year? It was 190 this year and it was how many?
It was about 150 average last year. So, we're serving a lot more individuals this year.
That's a huge jump.
Thank you. Thank you.
Item 6A4E Workforce Development.
Good afternoon, President Khan and Commissioners. I'm Don Nakamoto, the Administrator over Workforce Development. I just wanted to highlight a few things. You have my written report. We continue to be experiencing heavy demand for services from unemployed people in the community. I just wanted to go over some of the statistics. We continue to see about 9,000 to 10,000 visits to the Verdugo Job Center per month. In the 2009, 2010 fiscal year, we had over 110,000 visits and 35,000 first-time visitors to our center. So, the 11.5% or 4% unemployment rate in Glendale, that continues to stay pretty steady and so, people are continuing to have a lot of difficulty finding employment. So, I just wanted to point out that the demand for our services hasn't abated at all. One positive thing is that we do customer satisfaction surveys and the rate of strong approval for our services is about 85%. So, I think the public is recognizing the services that we have and appreciating some of the assistance that they're getting from our center. Also, we service businesses in the community, all types of assistance for businesses. They're experiencing a layoff if they need assistance finding new employees, if they need referrals for things like access to capital or other issues. We provide those services and in the past year, we've assisted, I think it's 682 local A couple of other things I wanted to point out. We just received a renewal of our parolee grant that's assisting people that are released from the state prison system with their employment and training needs. And the state, because of the state budget cutbacks, had to reduce the number of awards they gave this year. Forty-nine were given out last year for the entire state and this year, they reduced the amount to 19. And we were one of the 19. And it was based on performance. So, the state was happy. In fact, the State Department of Corrections came down this past week for a site visit and they said that our site was, they felt the model for the state of California. Finally, we recently received a $50,000 grant from the United Way to help launch an electronic medical records program in the Verdugo region. We're working with four of the hospitals to help the hospitals, but also 1,000 doctors in the Glendale Burbank area with that conversion process. We think there's a lot of opportunity for new employment in this field as the medical industry converts from paper records to electronic. That basically covers some of my highlights. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Dan, on this changeover to digital sort of intrigues me. What are you guys, are you going to be the lead consultant to tell people how to change or are you going to be the arms and legs to do the scanning or what?
It's very complicated.
Okay.
It's interesting because this is being pushed by the Obama administration. They've invested $20 billion nationally into this process and there are a lot of timelines in place and penalties as well for doctors' offices that don't do the conversion and hospitals that don't do the conversion. And so, surprisingly, we've been doing some informal surveys of the doctor community and with the hospitals and we're estimating about only 7% to 10% of the doctors' offices in the Glendale Burbank area have started this conversion process. So, on the one hand, we want to be a leader in pushing this movement regionally so we begin to see more of the conversion occur so there'll be jobs available for the people that we train. On the other hand, we want to work with, for example, Glendale College and the local school districts in preparing the workers that could fill some of the jobs that might be available. There've been a couple of studies about the projected impact of this whole thing and they're saying that probably 35,000 to 50,000 new jobs will be created nationally just for the issue of doing this conversion process.
Well, it'll, hopefully, when we get it done, it'll make our, our health quality look better, too. So, that's a pretty cool technology. If we, I mean, if that's something that we're going to acquire and be able to do.
I've actually seen some of the demonstrations on it. For example, you could carry a flash drive with all of your medical records. You can run your fingerprint over the flash drive and insert it into a computer. It can show CAT scan, x-rays you've had a long time ago, all the records, all your prescription drugs. And it's accessible to anybody that you allow to access and, as well as your doctor who can transfer the information to other doctors or hospitals. So, for example, if you're traveling and you run into an accident, if you have that flash drive available, it's very easy for some other doctor or hospital to provide assistance to you.
Just one other question. I've had some experience over there. I'm surprised your approval rating isn't higher than 85%. What, of the majority of people who, of the 15% who are dissatisfied, what are the things that they are dissatisfied with?
I would guess, without knowing, a lot of the actual results is that there's so many people that people may have to wait in line for services. It's not as though it's immediate access because of just the volume. That's, I think, mainly the issue.
Glad to see you had somebody get their GED.
Yeah. We did have a success. I don't know if you know about this, but Richard has been doing the training on the parolee program for parolees that wanted to get their GEDs because basically, they have no chance of getting employment unless they at least have a minimum of a GED. And so, he's been volunteering every, every week to train at least two or three people. And one of his students, so we thought the other one actually was going to pass, but one of his students did pass and got their GED and they're well-positioned now to get employment. Twelve of the people that we've been working with as parolees have gained employment, so we're pretty happy about that. So, that program is going pretty well.
Great. Congratulations on that. That's good. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have any written communications?
No, we don't.
Our next meeting is also a special meeting?
Yes.
On Thursday, February 10th, 2011, at 2:00. Anything else? Very adjourned.